Okay, everybody here in the ded zone.
Yeah, my honor, that's what I'm here for.
Okay, and we have the agenda in front of us. We are looking at open number three off of the additions to number one.
Under personnel.
Yeah, that would be under business progression, right?
Oh, progression, yes.
And then number eight of personnel goes and takes the number three.
Yes.
I get that right?
Number three will be removed from the agenda. And number three, once we get there, I'll explain. Number three under personnel will be removed because of number eight. Under personnel. Now, I'll explain that when we get there.
Motion by Lou. And second by Della. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, and we'll move to the financial reports. 2014 Treasury report.
Approval recommends.
Oh, excuse me. An approval recommends from April 18th, 2014. A motion by Deb, second by Cheryl to accept the minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Say aye. Now, we're on the financial reports. March 2014 Treasury report and the March 2014 monthly balance sheet. Now, did we decide last thing we approve this along with the bills? Or this will be a separate form? Okay? Right, so the three.
Yeah, again, we've got the dollars and I have no concerns about that. I did check with Joan specifically about that, but I don't leave over if I can get that. I think it's still a matter of just probably transference dollars, so we have to probably...
I'll make a motion to approve. A motion by David. Good financial report, seconded by Mark. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Yeah, we have added approval and approval of bills.
I had the opportunity this afternoon, actually, to come in to the district office. We do the additional March and April bills. I didn't see anything out of the month or this time of the year, so I would make a recommendation to approve the bill that I've written.
Okay. A motion by Mark.
I'll second.
Second by David. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, nothing in the consent agenda. Then we are on business items and we are moving number three, which is a review and consider approval of legacy well, which would be attributed to those who have generously donated their time and resources for the stadium project.
Just a little bit of update on that, Bruce. We did meet as media as our policy states to discuss it. Cheryl was the board member for that. We also brought in Max, the athletic director, Brad Skudlin, the baseball coach, also a member of Chris from the baseball club, and myself and Lomis Laura. And Gretchen came in and presented it. At that time, I think the committee's stance was that this is well worth us taking a look at and we're looking for more approval. Our recommendation is that we promote this, but I like Gretchen.
Thank you very much for moving to the mic. We have the whole town listening at home.
Thanks.
I think, yeah, I think whatever we want to present would work.
Okay, just to review, the purpose of naming facilities is it is a decision of the District 741 School Board to not name buildings or facilities. The school will consider items of recognition, dedication, and memorialization to properly propose to the appropriate committee established by the superintendent. Final approval or denial of the proposal will be determined by the school. And that, as I understand it, was put into place after some of the people that were approached in their donations. So, we're trying to reach a compromise so that we can appropriately...
And to honor them for their contributions to the district.
So, Connie Higginon with myself have been tasked to come up with a classy and appropriate way tastefully to recognize these people for their donations to our students and to the community. I used to work for Cullsbury Granite and I came into contact with an artist there who still is in the area and she is helping us out with some of the designs. And you have in front of you a couple of different options. And the committee felt that the option number two was kind of a favorite. There are only different, did you only get one? Option number two has the vertical pieces of granite showing the different areas of sizes. Each size is represented by the different amounts of donations. The granite that is being proposed is the same granite that's on the wall in the cafeteria where the people are recognized for the booster club. And it's called absolute black. Now, this is an example of that color. This is also an example of the artist, how she dined into etches actual portraits of people. If that would be the case, if the person that had donated that money would want to have that done. And there's also different letter fonts and different sizes that would fit appropriately into the sizes that are shown here. Each piece of granite that is there in the center of this wall would be built to have two or three get more donations, but it didn't sound like that was the hope.
Yeah, I think, Chris, because of some additional cost to the stadium project, is certainly looking for additional donations. So, it could certainly happen where other people may step forward and contribute to that project. So, it could expand.
If you're familiar with where this is, do you have a plan?
They have what you had given me. So, they have all this. They don't have the stadium plan.
They don't have the stadium plan, okay. As you're walking up to the stadium from the middle school parking lot, there is kind of a bridge area that goes up to the stadium seating. And on the left side of the concession stand, there is an area that if you look on your plan, it shows an area that is on the north wall of that that's approximately eight feet long and eight feet high, ten feet long and eight feet high. And we plan to hold it, if you look on the bottom of this piece of paper, that shows in plan how it would lay out so that it would kind of hold and have task lighting to do this stuff.
It's an area that's kind of protected against the...
It's under the...
The wind and weather.
So, it's under the weather and also wouldn't be in sunlight, so it wouldn't cause reflection for people that are on the field.
So, at this point, we're looking to approve?
I think it's the recommendation of the committee I put together that we approve this project. We do think it will look very nice where it's going to be a really will be kind of wall of granite with various plaques engraved into, it depends on whether you go vertical or horizontal with the pieces of granite. But it really will look like maybe hold up that one, that is a possible example of what the plaques could look like.
And we have eleven or twelve twenty-five thousand dollar donations, one fifteen thousand, ten thousand, and five five thousand at this time. And that's with the different sizes coming to play. Now, these will be etched right into these large pieces, right? They're not detachable.
The pieces themselves, you can take down each section?
Six pieces, not really, but not each individual one. And they're not being securely removable so that people won't want...
We're going to, we're going to wind up, get everything set up as nice as we can the first time, you know?
They're very securely attached to the framework.
So, this committee was set up according to our policy.
That's correct.
It's the recommendation that you just came up with.
It is, it is the recommendation. I think there's a couple of things that the board needs to decide on. One is the overall approval of the project. The other piece really is, do you want to give the committee itself a little bit of latitude to, rather than coming back to the board for each piece that's here? If the board would feel comfortable enough just having them present to the committee, that's up to the board whether they want to go that way. I guess for my personal piece, it'd probably be my recommendation, you just give the committee, it's a good committee. We're going to make sure that things look very well so that we don't have to come back to the board every time a plaque is developed or one of the squares is developed. Well, we would be the kind of the voice of the board to make sure that it's done in an appropriate classy way.
I was just going to say that contributors will be the people who determine what's on their individual size. So, let's say that you had a spot, Bruce, you could, you could just say Bruce Vandepool on there, but you could also have a picture of yourself playing baseball or, you know, anything that would be appropriate for that. So, it would just be up to them. So, we haven't taken that to them yet. So, that would be, I guess, what we would be bringing back or showing to someone as we knew what each one wanted.
And that's what you're talking about, so it's individual that are either like the business or the individual, we can just work with the artist to develop their individual square? And if it would be the board okaying for them to bring that just back to the committee group to say, yes, this is good? Or would you want each of those individual pictures brought back to the whole board for approval as those get developed? That would be the second question.
So, you could do this all in one motion or...
I made the motion that we curb the project with the caveat that the individual pieces, when they have been decided on by the person, be brought back to the committee for final approval.
Okay, motion by Deb.
Second.
Second by Mark. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. A lot of volunteer labor going in at that point.
I think it's all work on that.
I guess I did miss one thing. That was actually a business item. Is there any comment on that business item? Okay, sorry about that. Okay, then we will go to review and consider approval of resolution adjusting educational programs and positions effective for the 2014 or 2014-15 school year.
And I'll take the board through each individual item. This is a resolution. The board directed me out December 17th to come forward with recommendations on any possible reductions or additions. After looking at the budget, I really am looking at around three hundred and fifty dollars mark or a little more. I would remind the board that even though we're making a resolution on this today, you can adjust, the one piece that would be difficult to adjust would be the staffing positions, particularly for licensed staff, because there's very strict guidelines, i.e. to follow on any reductions as far as on requested lead. But as far as the other pieces, if our budget looked better, if we had more students that enroll this beginning of the year, we could reevaluate this and we could make adjustments at that time if I came back to the board and said, hey, I'd like to add this back. We can certainly do that. Now, the other side of that, outside of staff, if we lose students, I can come back to the board and I might say, we need to make additional reductions at this time because of a lack of enrollment. So, both of those apply, but the board does have the option, even if this is approved, to adjust it with certain limits again. Even as long as we make the timelines for our licensed staff, if something changed that we needed to, wanted to analyze this app back, we can do that. But as far as reductions, we need to meet the timelines that are required by the state law. All right? So, if we would start, the first two are pretty easy. Mary Keable and Bill Brent, those are both retirees after some very excellent work on both of their parts. And I think with Mary, and I know I'm going to get this wrong again, I think I shorted her one year for working in the district. I think I said twenty-nine, and I think this is her thirtieth year. Does anybody know for sure? I know that I was off one year, so we need to give her credit for one additional year past what I had mentioned to her and I told her I'd at least get that out. Any questions on either one or two? Of all the reductions, those are certainly the easiest. Happy for them to go into retirement. I think that's a great deal for both of them. Reduced two paraprofessionals at the elementary school. You can see the savings and some of those have adjusted. Part of this is because we got a retirement. And when we get down to personnel, I'll talk about why it went up a little bit from your last piece is because we had a retirement of a paraprofessional who has been here for a lot of years. So, that was a little bit more of a cost savings for us, but it's a reduction of two paraprofessionals in the elementary. Number four, elementary classroom budget reductions. Dave did look at his budget and he came forward with the number to help reduce his budget in the elementary itself. CE and EC, FE, teacher supervision. That's where Community Ed is going to kick a little bit in now. David also took on a little bit of the work with that. So, he's going to take over the supervision for that and we're going to cost that back to Community Ed who has been really supervising to that program. So, we're going to get a cost savings of five thousand dollars because Dave has added some additional work to his plate. Reduction of the speech piece, that's that cost. Now, there is a lot more there. There's a couple of caveats to this. One is that there is special ed. If we didn't have a special ed reimbursement for that, this number would be a lot more. But because there is a special ed reimbursement, it's, I've adjusted that amount that we saved for that particular thing. Does mean that caseloads for other speech people will go up. I won't deny that. I still think that after talking to a central ed and Dave and Lori, that we believe that we can do it with the two speech people that we have. We will have to adjust things the way we're doing it. The other thing that we do lose from the speech person is that she has a, it's called a C's, just a C, post yes on it, certification that we can't get, which means that we can't build back the state for people who are on medical assistance. All right? I did look at that and it will vary. This year, we're able to build back about thirty-five hundred. So, depending on the year, it'd be more or less because only certain students qualify for that reimbursement. This year, we have, we have nine students that do, there's a certain formula that to go by. I still do recommend this, this particular reduction.
What is most districts, what do they carry for this position? How many?
Dave did a pretty, he looked at the staffing for most of the districts. We still fall within that range without a doubt. We're not excessively over any of the other districts. There's certainly some that are lower as far as staffing ratios, but there's, I would say, if I'm right, a lot more that are in that range or higher.
2012 Minnesota average was forty-three.
Can I ask something here? Is it possible, because you two are kind of ill on this, could you come down by the microphone?
You need me down at the microphone too?
No, you can stay where you are.
Thank you.
I think we're good there. But I noticed when I was watching some of the tape, you're really quiet.
They want to get you on, just kind of under tape, do you?
Is that possible?
Do we want on tape too or just the mic?
Well, I don't want, if you guys could move down by the mic, that would be great. It's either that or you have to talk as loud as I do.
Well, and when I watch the recordings, most of that you can't hear, and I think anybody watching would probably think to hear what's going on. Go ahead, was what you were talking about.
In 2012, the state average for caseload was around forty-three and we are at, and this is strictly numbers, there can be variances in the amount of service time the student gets in any given year or what the speech disability is and what the intensiveness of the services. So, that, so this is strictly based on numbers. And it means that at this moment, we have twenty-seven students on a caseload. And area districts, most of the, most of the districts that I have on here, I have about seventeen school districts in the area. Their caseloads all range between thirty-five and fifty. There's a couple in here with fifty-five, even with one school that has sixty caseloads. And so, we're just looking to kind of get up into that.
So, what would their number be on their caseload next year? That's this year, if I can...
Strictly by the numbers that we have, this year, the caseload would be forty-one. That is before we would be looking at any services that special ed, regular special ed teachers could take from that, from those caseloads. If it could be that something just like a language, usually at the high school level. And then, so that would be adjusted, so that would be, that would be lower.
This is the part I'm not understanding of it. This is stuff that the regular, not, don't mean to offend anybody, but if the regular special ed teachers could be doing, why haven't they?
Well, it's...
Because we've had three special ed teachers, we'd be having to do that.
We've had three speech teachers.
Or speech, thank you.
Typically with, typically with language, there's the opportunity to have a speech teacher be on the IEP as a consultant and the services would be provided by the special ed teacher. And then, at the elementary level, you're dealing, it's more with articulation, creating the sounds, things like that, and those would be specific to a trained speech pathologist. And so, anything that we would look at as far as minimizing the caseload for the speech people at the high school level would be in dealing with the language portion of the IEP.
And certainly, we're going to have to readjust how we've been doing things from the past.
How much of the current caseload is from the high school?
I'm not sure exactly. I have the number of students total that were servicing through speech. We didn't break it down that way. It would just be adjusted as...
Seventeen, Cheryl.
Is that what it...
It decreases as you go up, you view people. Students will tend to get more of the articulation down and because of working in some of the areas, will be dismissed from speech, possibly in the state and other services like LV, but and continue to work on some of the language pieces.
I would hope that would be the goal of speech.
Yeah, so, so usually you will see fewer as you might go up.
Because they're more time in the elementary school or they have, have been having more time.
And at a certain point, they reach at the high school level, sometimes the students will just reach a level that is where they're going to be. And so, we look at how the services are provided once they get to that level also. But just like any other thing, we, personnel issue, we would put speech teachers where they would be needed the most. So, it could be that there'd be less service time at the high school next year and increase at the elementary, you know, wherever the services are needed based on the piece.
And it's not just in speech we use the consult basis either, depending on the number of LV students you have and the number of EDD students you have. And most speech is, when we disseminate caseloads, you will, there are other cases and it happens quite frequently where you may have an EDD licensed teacher case managing, working with some of the study skills, and you have the consultant, the LV teacher, who is part of the IEP too, creating that programming, but it may be facilitated by a teacher with a different license, but it's being consulted with the licensed teacher in that area. So, it's not just in speech that the consultant piece is part of.
Can you guys just say, Alther? I think your copy would be in the future. I have one more question on the thirty-five hundred dollars that you were going back. Did you work that into this number?
The third, no, I did not. That will vary. My number is over a little bit as far as what I'm recommending that we reduce. So, I didn't do that because that number, depending on the students, could go up or down next, next year, the year after that. You know, and the other piece that we don't know again is not next year, but the year after that, then the state is going to go into a different way of figuring out what we can reimburse for a special ed, which is going to be another complete adventure in itself. I have no idea how that's going to shape all of where they look more at. The issue that the student is having and reversing for that versus if we have a special ed teacher, they reimburse so much for that, they have a paraprofessor, they reimburse so much for that, that's all going to change and not next year or the year after that.
I mean, nothing's for sure from the government.
I don't have, I don't have a good answer to that. I know that it has a number of superintendents really, we scratch our heads every day because of the way special ed is anyway with the reimbursement and financing, but this will be a completely different can of worms for us.
I just want to make sure that, I've been on board a long time and I've seen this group get, you know, made baby and made small and made gay and made tall. And the one thing that I've been very impressed with lately is the few kids that are at the middle school, high school that don't need speech. And that's a direct connection to them getting the services younger in life that they needed. So, I think we need, I'm sure you will, but I'm just saying, I want that to be very closely observed.
When we start looking at the budget for the following year, we're going to start with the list of reductions that we made. Now, again, we'll look at everything, you know, a lot, if we're getting money from the state and things are good, it'll be better and we'll add things back. If they're not, we're going to have, again, have hard decisions. Believe me, this is something that administrative team, myself, are getting a lot of sleepover. This is not one of our most cherished jobs right now. These are all hard decisions.
Got it. Every decision's tough, but I don't want it to come back to the kids going backwards.
We won't, we won't forget that. We will reevaluate it.
And I guess one thing, as Dave and I discussed in this particular cut, I have already discussed with our staff over here, because of the importance of the priority is going to have to be servicing that articulation and that language in the younger, the younger grades, that it is probably going to fall more on our middle school and high school to work very closely with our speech department and West Central Ed in making sure that our middle schoolers and high schools are still getting the skill work that they need so that, but the speech services as far as that direct articulation work is going to, the more the priority is going to be maintained in that elementary because that's where it's going to be most effective and efficient so that we continue to have students released from speech as they hit that middle school and high school and just work on maintaining those skills.
Other questions on that? The point 172 FE reduction, that word language is really that we had less kids sign up for it. That's where that reduction is coming from. The online class reduction, infinity, Lori, I think, why don't you give a little bit of information on that? There was some concern about, are we losing additional college classes because of this? So Laurie's going to provide the board with some information on that.
I went back and I pulled a couple of years of information. Um, two years ago, we had thirty-six students participate in the program. Uh, they took a variety of nineteen courses. Only six of those courses were courses that we do not offer. Um, only five semesters, um, of courses, um, carry the college credit. So, only five semesters of quarter credit was earned two years ago, and that was in the science area. All right? The rest were in courses that we currently have, like, we have government class here, we have road history course here. The reason students chose to took, take it could have been the flexibility in the scheduling, um, could have been in wanting to have the experiencing of taking an online course, those types of things. When we first instituted Infinity, I still believe that it does provide us with, um, some flexibility in our schedule, um, but at the very beginning, um, we did not have teachers that were trained into using Google Share, or Moodle, or blogging, or testing online, that those experiences that I do believe students need to know as they move on into college. Since then, we do have several teachers in our building that are currently using a lot of those online skills. So our students are getting those experiences through some of our courses here. Um, this year, we had thirty-eight students participate in the program. Um, sixteen different courses were taken. Only four of those courses we did not, do not offer, and zero of those courses were taken for college credit. Um, with that said, um, I still believe in the program, um, what it gives to our school, but with us looking at taking the advanced biology and looking at that project Lead the Way, if I get to the point I need to, as far as the fundraising part, we will have a science course that is going to be taken by over twenty-five students. Right now, my sign up is at twenty-eight, and all of those students will have the opportunity to take it for college credit. So we're actually, from the history right now in this meeting, I think we're going to be offering more college credit, um, with adding the project Lead the Way as a component of our current advanced biology class. Um, we will still do some flexibility in scheduling, but hopefully, we can also work most of those out with our current scheduling. I think it's a good program, but knowing we have to make some cuts, I think it's going to be the less, lesser of two evils to get, still bring quality programming to our students and, and the high school level. Questions?
So Gavin, do you have a number of, sorry, do you have a number of, uh, college credits that we do offer?
Yes, I did. I asked on your Facebook page, and I didn't do that, it's the end. Okay. We currently are offering twenty-eight. We have thirteen in the math department. We have six in the history department, seven in the English department, and then I was including, um, the advanced biology is three. And then if we would move into the second phase of that project Lead the Way, there'd be another three at the ninth grade level. So it is over one year's worth of college that students would have the opportunity to take.
And we do offer some of those every other year, just to.
But within their programming cycle, we could facilitate those. And it's pretty, it is in line with other area schools, neighboring schools, et cetera.
A question, if it looks like we're going to, because this option isn't available, that some kids might look for alternative, our, alternative programs where we don't receive the funding for them. Can we, at a, if it looks like that's happening, can we quickly get that back? Can you get these kids?
Yeah, um, usually I do the registration for these, and as we go through the individual registrations, we'll know what they're considering and why, and Jackie keeps post tabs on that for me. Um, we can, as laid out as August tenth, we can pick this program up again. So if it's something that we can do, or we see it would be advantageous to.
You know, one kid's going PSC or some other alternative, or that could fund it, right?
Right, right. And that's where, you know, this one is, it is that double edged sword, or kind of the, I don't know. Do I think, is it a quality program? Yes, but it doesn't incline.
Another question from the other. Um, we're going to reduce one pair of professional in the secondary. Reducing one point five six-period classes in our, behind the board that we've lost. Uh, got over, over thirty students at, from the beginning of the year, with, from what we projected to where we're at. And in addition, we'll lose another ten students, probably as we go into next year, because our old-class is bigger than our incoming class. That's part of why these are, are taking place, is we have less students right now. And we create the offer, everything that we have, but we just have under resources. So, um, one point five six-period classes for next year, if I'm not mistaken, we won't have any six-period classes next year.
Correct.
Uh, secondary staff reductions, uh, and we'll get into those a little bit more, but those are all based on really, reductions based on, on staffing needs. Now, that's where we're at right now with those. There are some of the reductions, and I'll be very specific about that when I get to some of the on request leaves. Um, a part of that is dealing with certification right now, and I do expect, uh, once the certifications are built, to bring a staff member back, but once we get to that individual, I'll explain that a little bit more to the board. Uh, secondary staff reductions, photocopy reductions. Uh, we're going to, originally I had a bigger number on that, but after talking, I wanted to make sure I talked with Mark O'Gan, or the ones that have kind of trotted out a piece. Um, I think the way that we're going to go with this is to put bigger, three smaller machines in, in the district versus just one big one, and that will be adjusting. Um, when I get to another one cut, I'll explain a little bit more about that. Uh, we also have natural coming in to give us the same type of piece. We'll see which one gives us the best deal. But the only thing we can come up with, at least for changing in itself, is fifteen hundred. If we left everything the way it was, um, we would save more money, but I think eventually we're going to have to look at the change, just a matter of when, I believe, we'll have to do that. Right now, we have one person doing photocopy on a big machine. And I do believe that as reductions occur, we're going to have to reevaluate that strongly. I am going to look at that as kind of a transition, but I'll get to that just as we go down. Uh, so anyway, photocopy reductions, fifteen hundred, their yearbook estimate, or change in the yearbook from a class to an after-school activity. All right? We do say, there's a question mark on that, we think we're going to say it'll be a stat much money, but that is, that is an estimate for number thirteen. Uh, reduce millions out of the secondary. Laurie thinks that with our new, um, system that we're using for JCI, or J, JMC, we're going to be able to do less millions out to the, to the parents who are sending things electronically. So hoping to get a two thousand dollar savings there. Uh, photocopy position, as I mentioned, right now, we do have somebody that's doing the photocopy. Okay, I do believe that we need to change that, but I also believe that there's some concern on the part of the staff, that machines are going to get jammed and all this stuff, so what I did do is I re- I reduced that person by one hour. She's been at five hours, I, you know, as far as I can find, and yet, we have less students, but there hasn't been a reduction there, so at least at this point, that's a reduction of one hour. Any questions on any of that? Um, staff development, I'm looking at, we only put fifteen thousand in the staff development. I'm looking at cutting a couple thousand. I don't even like doing that, but, um, like I mentioned, right now, I'd rather cut a little more than I have to with the hope that I can bring some of it back, and those are easy things to bring back. Uh, originally, I talked about moving more into our general, or our capital fund for, out of our curriculum budget. Uh, we just spent a very interesting meeting with the capital and equipment, the facilities and equipment, um, group, looking at our buyer plan for capital. There's not a lot of money there to, to exchange. I am still going to try to do five thousand, even if I have to dip into my reserve, which is not big. When we're looking at a reserve, we're probably talking about a hundred and seventy thousand, and that's not much of a reserve or capital. But I, and as a reminder to the board, I can't, I can only use capital funds for certain things. I can use general fund for everything else. I can transfer to, from cap, or from general to capital, but I can't transfer from capital to general. This is really a savings not to the district, it's five thousand dollars. It's a savings to our general fund. Truly, all of our, um, our curriculum budget, in my opinion, should come out of the capital budget. We're buying books, we're buying other things with that, we're buying curriculum. That should really be capital. We just don't have the money in our capital to do it. Uh, as we talk about facility projects, certainly that's something that I'll be bringing up, because if we had a facility project and freed up some of our capital, our general fund would automatically save that hundred thousand dollars, because we could take those items out of the capital budget. If that makes sense. But for right now, I'm looking at taking five thousand out of, out of the general fund, moving that to the capital fund and pulling that, and then I'm also looking at reducing fifteen thousand from the hundred thousand dollar budget for curriculum. Uh, believe me, not happy with this. You know, it's not like everybody has everything that they need, but at least for this year, that's going to be my recommendation to the board. Uh, reduce chemical health counselor, I just want, we had a lot of debate on this one last year, if you remember. Um, really, because of, um, the Sterns City, or Sterns County Collaborative, we're getting about six twelve, exactly that much, six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five from them for that collaborative. My intent is, although we're reducing it here, we're going to gain it back from the collaborative. So in essence, we're leaving the chemical dependency counselor right where she's at.
The word intent kind of has mixed there, because it either you are, or you aren't.
We are leaving it right where it's at right now. I cannot tell the board that you will not hear me bring this back up again in a future time for, for next year, or leaving it as is. Uh, combined, some community ed and district newsletters, I think that's a low estimate of a thousand dollars. We might be able to save a little bit more, but we couldn't get our exact numbers yet, so I put down a low estimate on that, could be a little bit more. Secondary classroom budget reduction, Laurie contributed a thousand dollars, I thank her for that, it's never easy. It's not like they have a wooden ball of dollars in their budget, but she contributed a thousand dollars. Now, that brings it up to three hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-three. There's also a fifteen hundred dollar piece that is a revenue generator, it's not a reduction, but because of that, uh, my final piece on that would really be three hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and forty-three. Um, where that fifteen hundred is coming from is that we're going to build back to community ed, fifteen hundred more for use of our custodians. So community ed will pay us that money, but it's a revenue, it's not a reduction. A few things that we had on our last piece that we're not doing, but certainly input from the board, I did put on raising the athletic entrance fees from, uh, four, four and six dollars up to five and seven. Remember, that would be a possibility of raising another, um, seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars of revenue to the district. I think eventually it's coming. I think there's, from when I talked with Max, there's only one other group in our kind of surrounding area that's already doing it. Uh, at this point, I guess my recommendation is wait till a few more move over, and then I think that's an easier adjustment for us to make. So we may, next year, you might hear me say, we're looking at this, that we're, we're talking about fees of raising, because more groups, I think eventually we'll move there. The regions are moving to that, and when that happens, usually, the districts move right along with them eventually. And then the other piece, um, was resource training and solutions. I can't say I'm real happy on this one, but I did talk to them about it, and they said that I needed to let them know, and there's a state statute, I looked it up, that says I have to let them know by February first. Now, what they are going to do is, I did ask for them to go to their board and, and waive that, because they, their board has the option to do that. They had a meeting on Tuesday and couldn't come to a decision. I don't know what to say about that one. Uh, they couldn't come to a decision. Uh, they did ask me what, um, if we stayed in there, if they reduce the price, whether that's an option, and I gave them a figure, or we'd say probably a couple thousand dollars if they're still willing to let us join for reduced fee. That would still be a cost savings to us. At this point, I don't know what eventually will happen. So that could add a little bit more, but again, it's easier to bring it back than it is to reduce it.
What was the amount that had to do with it?
Uh, the, the fees for it are three thousand, one hundred and, I think ninety-five dollars or seventy-five dollars, depends on the number of students. So as our students go down, our fee also goes down. Uh, you know, and I, and I think some of the things our resource has done for us have been valuable. Uh, the only thing that, but the, the costs are not belonging to resource, isn't that much of a difference when we send staff to trains. So the, the, the things that we gained probably the most, that we would lose, would be our staff regulations and, and one student's excellent recognition. But we're paying for that in addition, that's not like it comes with, we're paying an additional fee to participation. But if I'm going to cut that, or reduce that, or eliminate it, I need to come to the board, and the board will have to pass a vote saying that we're eliminating that. So, so that's my, my recommendations to the board. Like I had said, it is a little more than the three hundred thousand I was looking at, but as I follow it, at the start of this year, enrollment can be a tricky thing. So I'd rather be a little bit over and add that than under, and have to start looking at reductions again.
If we have more comments from the board, um, this is also a business item, so we are open to public comment. So anything from the board before we look at public comment on this one?
Okay, I'm just, I, I do have something, I think lost, and it's not a direct line item, but I did receive some community input on the class sizes, that this does affect. Right?
Well, the, the reduction, it's the way that really David is, is, is putting together his, his building. You've got two options, and Davey can certainly step in, because I think what has come back to me, at least today, in a number of ways, was a concern with the fifth grade, um, class sizes. You know, and, and I'll let Dave, I, I dress it himself, but really, it's going to be the, an advantage in one place, in that, but David, if you want to, just go a little bit on that.
Sure. Um, what I started to look at, first of all, I, I thought we were fortunate, I'm fortunate to have the option of having four sections anywhere in the building. So, I started to, uh, think about where four sections would be most beneficial for our students. And I met numerous times with the fifth grade teachers, and, uh, and working on input from them. And right now, what happens in fifth grade is, uh, we have a teacher who teaches all of the math, a teacher who teaches all of the science, and one who teaches all of the reading and language arts. Certainly, they're getting about seventy minutes a day in those core subjects. And in talking with them, four sections, obviously, you know, I, all, any, all of the teachers would enjoy the four sections. I would love to have four sections if we could afford it. Um, four sections would, would work for those students, certainly. But, uh, in speaking with, with fifth grade today, I, if we did do four sections, we would be looking at cutting, um, they think they would have to cut their core classes by ten minutes a day in order to get that extra section of, of core subjects in during the day, an extra hour. And, um, so that was one thing that I considered. Then I started to look at, um, this, this class has been four sections, I think, all the way through before I got here, and there's eighty-eight students in that, in that class at this current point. And there was a lot of, there was concern about the class size, and I, I did do a, a survey of, uh, twenty-seven school districts in our area with class size, but then I also looked at what we did last year. And, um, last year, we, we had eighty-four students in fifth grade at the end of the school year. And that's only four more than what we already have, which would be one point three student increase in class sizes. So, that's one thing I also looked at. Then I looked at, uh, I have to replace Marion Keel, so that means I have to take a classroom teacher from somewhere else, move that person into fifth grade, a totally new position, because that person will be teaching a core subject of science and some social studies and, and other things as, as they, uh, and other things as they do their scheduling. So I'm putting somebody in there who in essence is a first-year teacher, because they're learning a whole new curriculum and having to design a curriculum in science to have it last, you know, to make it worthwhile for 70 minutes a day. So then, I got thinking, if I added a fourth section of fifth grade, I would have to take a current, another current teacher who would be currently teaching something in the lower grades, first, second, possibly third, kindergarten first or second. Then in essence, I would be taking that teacher, putting them into an unfamiliar situation again, having them start over with the curriculum, the nuances with the fifth grade. Then that person would only be there for one year. Then I have to put that person in another place. And so that was one thing that I considered, is staffing qualifications, needs, strengths of the staff that we already have. And then I got to thinking about where this is, where having four sections, smaller class size, is going to do the most good. And my administratable opinion would be that I would rather have four sections of kindergarten for one year and give those students the opportunity to take in what they can at that level, knowing that the next year, we would be a three-section school all the way around. With multi-age, the two teachers that I have in multi-age are fabulous, outstanding teachers. And most of the feedback that I got from parents who are concerned about multi-age, their biggest praise was not necessarily for the program, but for the teachers that are teaching. So what I wanted to do is make the transition with multi-age a little easier by having one of the multi-age teachers move into first grade, because I have a first grade, I have a first grade teacher who wants to do title. And so I would move that person there. The kindergarten students who are in multi-age would have the opportunity to go into that classroom with the multi-age, with the teacher who is currently teaching multi-age, so there would be a nice transition. Then I wanted to have another, the other multi-age teacher stay in the kindergarten, first grade area, where I get nothing but praise and grade comments for them. And so, you know, part of my issue would have been possibly taking one of those to placing them in fifth grade for one year, then moving them back. In my opinion, if I'm going to have four sections for one year, the best paying for the buck would be putting four sections in kindergarten, giving those students a jumpstart that will help them in the future. And it will create less shifting of staff who are basically, who I believe are already in positions where they're extremely strong. And we look at that every year, and we make adjustments based on that. Last year, and last year for sure, when we had 84 students in fifth grade, we had no title. We had no math core. Next year, we have, with three sections of fifth grade, we would increase the students by one, maybe two per class. Give the opportunity to stay at 70 minutes per core class. Also, by making the shift with the multi-age, I'm able to add a title teacher who will work with grades four and five predominantly, which are getting no services at this point. Then, a few weeks ago, well, a couple months ago, we were awarded a math core tutor who will work strictly with grades four and five. And that person was just hired, and so that came into play a little bit. So by raising the classes just a little bit in fifth grade over last year, I'm increasing, I'm adding a full-time title person, a full-time 40-hour-a-week math core person. And then I still have the opportunity to bring one of the parents who was working with the multi-age up to fourth and fifth grade in the afternoon to work with those students. So overall, I just felt that I have a one-shot deal here with four sections left. And kindergarten to me is the area where I feel that they are going to get something that's going to carry them into the future years as they continue through the elementary school. So that's what I'm looking at. Not an easy decision. It is not an emotional decision. It's a decision that I feel will best suit the large number of students and the large number of students that have not received other services in other areas. So I think I'm confident that that will be a good situation for our younger students. There are fifth grade families who may, you know, would certainly like to see four sections, but there are also, there's also a kindergarten group that will be thrilled to have four sections and the opportunity to still, if you have contact with those multi-age teachers that have been doing such a nice job there.
And next year will be every day, all day kindergarten.
Other questions from the board? If not, then we are going to go open up for public comment. I might ask if somebody has public comment. Would you really like to down here by the microphone, so we can just pass it down a couple?
If I can release them at this point, I don't think there's anything else that I think could necessarily address.
Are you two just speaking about the same topic or are you going to do different topics? Okay. They allow five minutes.
I won't take five minutes. I wasn't really prepared to have public comment on this, but as a parent of a fourth grader going into fifth, there, I don't agree with the more, the better place is kindergarten. That class is not the same class of kids as a couple of years ago. There are a lot of kids with intent, I just think 28 and 29 kids is too many. And I feel like it might be great for those kindergartners coming in, but what about the fourth and, what about those fifth graders that also need more time? I feel like there's already, I'd like to know then what they're going to do to, for the kids who, they've got title, they've got math core, they've got, how are they going to spend the time on the kids that might get lost in a big class like that? So I just really hope you think about those class of kids too that have been in fourth the whole way through, and I think keeping them in fourth one more year would be best.
All right, I'm Amy Jelby, Spanish and ESL teacher. Although I am on leave of absence this year with Emily Stackreiter covering as a long-term staff. The information I just gave you, I attempted to meet with Lori, and we are meeting on Friday, but tonight is tonight, but my name is up on the agenda. So I don't seem to overstep anyone else. We were snowing out, do you believe it? I understand that the reduction presented by Mr. Hewitt is a world language reduction. And that Dave Wilkie has seniority over me, so he then gained that class and therefore the reduction in the language department. My concern is with the ESL program. And my leave of absence is me getting my licensure in ESL, which I will have by the end of the summer. And I will be the first licensed ESL teacher in the district. So just to look on the right-hand side, we have, in the past, 2011, 2012, we had two separate teachers, so different class times. The next year, I had two class periods, one at the elementary school and one for the middle school and high school. Currently, Ms. Stackreiter spends time over in the elementary, but no class periods are given for our high school, middle school students. There are three of them in the middle school, high school. By statute, with Title III funding, if they have been in the public schools for five years or more, they no longer qualify for funding, and it's up to the district to continue services with them. But I do know for sure, one of the three has not been in the district for five years. So what I see, and this is projected also for next year, that it's only one class period for ESL. And we have two separate buildings. And if I can draw your attention over to the left-hand side. Currently, again, one class period. We have a current EL enrollment of nine with the numbers indicated. And we're giving 150 minutes per week for all nine students. With, well, technically, 150 minutes a week for six being the elementary students, and then no service for the pre-high school, middle school. To compare to local schools, Belgrade, Grupnel Rosa, they have a .5 FTE in their school enrollment, as you can see. And they also have a nine current EL enrollment with comparable numbers to the different grade levels. But my biggest note is that they have 360 minutes per week at the elementary level. And they are meeting the state requirements of meeting the individual needs of students. The kindergarten group getting their services every day. WEDA is the state language testing that students go through to determine their proficiency and to provide individualized service to their needs. Belgrade, Grupnel Rosa has in their policy that certainly a score group gets their services and the other as well. And then their high school, middle school, meeting every day for a full hour, so 480 minutes per week for their students. On that side, I do have information from La Catarra Valley, who has a comparable all-school enrollment, but they do have a larger EL population. But again, much higher numbers. On that side, we have the tier A, tier B, tier C, that is somewhat in line with that WEDA grouping on the BDE. They determined they're to be at those three tier levels instead of by score. So I just want to make it known also that language ability is considered in two groupings. One is the conversational level, basic interpersonal communication. And there is the cognitive academic language. And that is what is taught in the ESL class. And you might have an ESL student or a student that does not have English as their native language. And it may seem like they don't need services, they're advanced, but it is that academic English of whether or not they are able to produce. I ask you to consider the time that's being given to our ESL students and their needs. Do you have any questions?
On your list here, it says, high school, middle school, no direct service teacher check-in.
That generally during ESL services, when they're possibly exiting the program, that there's checking with the teachers to see how they're doing, if they need extra help in their material, make sure they are understanding the academic material. So at this time, Ms. Stackreiter checks in periodically with the teachers to find out if those students are able to keep up.
And we also have a, it's called the duty hour. It's our high school, middle school duty hour for ESL students that if there is a need for them to have individual hope or small group duty hour that they, or study hall, small group, that they can be put into through looking at how they are doing and what's been going on with their individual programming. It has been decided that they are doing okay, and they wanted to take the courses that they are in and do the check-ins keys. We also have our younger seventh grade student working very closely with Tracy Peepenberg in a everyday study hall for providing some services. Now, not necessarily the specific language services, but we felt as a student assistance team, keeping her in the classroom and working on those, the skills and the social development in those classes was more important at this time. So looking at continuing to go back and look at that for next year's and depending on what her needs are. So there is a remediation study hall duty hour period in our schedule for the high school, middle school, because we haven't had the high needs in ELL yet at this time.
So basically, a student's assistant?
No, a student's assistant. Okay, a student's assistant team, our student's assistant team, which is similar to an IEP team.
In fact, ESL students have an IEP team.
They don't have an IEP. We have a school student assistance team that meets with students that have some different special, so like in our ELL, students or other students that are struggling, if they are struggling, will meet and look at programming or modifications or interventions if needed.
A lot of schools have just a student assistance team for all students in the building.
I got that. I'm just trying to stay on, oh, I asked a question about this. Who determines, it sounded like what you said to me was the student is the one that decides whether they need more help or not.
No, we're living with the schedule and the students' teachers. We made that determination. Our student's assistant team, Jackie, myself, the student advisor, and then the teachers that have that student.
Is the ES, or the?
Is the SAT, student assistant team.
Does that person include the person that's teaching the English or the second language?
It did not this year, because we did not have, Mrs. Stackreiter doesn't have that ESL license. So we looked at those teachers that are working with the students with interventions, et cetera. As we had students that needed those services, then she was included.
That makes no sense. That should be the first person on that group.
She doesn't have the training in that area, so we look at, like, our spent teachers have those interventions and that training in that area, so we rely on that.
I understand the concept, I'm just, it doesn't really work without the key components of the person who actually does that.
Once they, once they were put into that program, or once they were into that period, then she became a part of that team. But right now, we are not servicing the EL, the seventh grade ELL as part of that team. Because we kept her with our seventh, with Mr. Peepenberg.
Remember, we will have an ESL certified by the end of the summer, and that should be considered.
Right.
And that is number one.
Another question to the board?
I have a question, I have a grade school. And I feel like the class sizes are going to be way too big for her. How many kindergarten classes, how many students would be, if you have four sections of kindergarten, how many students would be in each class?
Approximately 17 to 18, 17 to 18, which will be kind of.
And two full-size pairs?
Pairs haven't been assigned yet. It'll be based on our needs.
Okay. But, well, right now, they have two parents out of there.
For three seconds.
Yeah. My concern is that, like she said, there's a lot of kids that are going to get lost in a large class like that. My daughter could probably be one of them. There's a lot of EK stuff with the little kids. I'm on the playground with them, with these other students, every day. So I know this group probably will, and I just think that it would do a huge, huge disservice to the kids to do that much. I just wanted to make that.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else? Okay, we are at a point right now where we've detached the resolution for two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year reductions. I would recommend that people, under notes, do another discussion.
This is a resolution, so it comes to both, if there's a, a possible.
You're a couple?
If, if somebody comes up with a motion.
Any other discussion?
Well, it's, it's hard. I mean, I empathize with, with the parents for that class size, but at the end of the day, I think they've elegantly stated that there's going to be more help in them, in that area to help, and just maybe just for Dave to listen to the parents of that class and say, you know, is there some issues, maybe there's something else that we can kind of do for that class, just to monitor them for, at least for the first half of the year to see what's what is happening, and if there's needs more title or more, not title, but parent help or whatever, I think that would be one to also. I'm sure they would be more than happy to do that, but again, as a parent, we're all parents up here, or, you know, with kids, and it's hard, it's a hard decision. But still, at the end of the day, we have to have a budget that's going to be solvent for the school for years to come, and I would make the recommendation to approve the cuts as listed.
Dave, we have a motion by Mark.
I'll second it, but, you know, I'd like to kind of follow up on Mark's point.
Second by David, and then...
Yeah. I think Dave and Bob and Lori, and they put a ton of time into this stuff, and it's very hard, you know, it's very hard, and everything that you guys say, you know, we're hearing that. I gotta trust the administrative team puts forth, you know, as tough as it is for them, you know, they, they, they're the ones that have their day today, and we have to go with their recommendations on that. And I know there could be some disagreement, and it's, and it could go either way, but at the end of the day, I'm seconding the motion, because I think that they put a lot of work into this, and this is their recommendation, so.
And I just would remind the board that, in essence, how that is going to be staffed in the elementary is not part of this resolution, but your approving is not how that is going to shake out. What you're approving is just the reductions to that.
Right. But we also have...
But in a hearing.
It, it's certainly something you're hearing, it's just that, even if you make these reductions, if Dave chose to change things, it could, you're not tying it in. All you're doing is approving the reductions.
Any further discussion? Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll call.
All right, Kella?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Okay. Then we are going to move to number two, which is, Bruce, I will provide a summary of the superintendent's evaluation. We met with Superintendent Hewitt in close session on April eighteenth, two thousand fourteen to go over his evaluation. We had a great discussion about this evaluation, and all of us are very pleased with his performance. We used an evaluation from the Minnesota School Board Association, which has ten parts. Inside all of those parts, there are four to six questions, with a summary question at the end of each part. The questions are rated one to five, one being unacceptable and five being outstanding. We have consolidated evaluations from each of the school board members for this presentation about the review. One, does the superintendent provide leadership for the school districts' educational programs, staff development programs, and curriculum development to provide the best learning environment for the students? Now, inside that one, there are four to six questions. They were all rated between four and five. Okay, superintendent comments, where Superintendent Hewitt seems to know many administrators in other schools, and informs us of what other districts have for programs and activities. He seems to have a good working relationship with them, which is very valuable to our district. He is always looking for better and more efficient ideas. Number two, does the superintendent inform and advise the school board about programs, practices, problems of the school district, and keep the school board informed of activities operating under the school board's authority? Again, a series of questions inside of that number two, and the ratings were all between three and five. Comments, this appears to be a strength of his, and it gives us information on each side of an issue. Does the super, number three, does the superintendent explain the educational needs of the school board, including recommending necessary new or revised policies and stepping changes for school board action? Again, there was four to five, maybe six questions inside, I don't remember how many in each of them. It was all rated between K and V. Comments, we're doing a good job reviewing policies and updating. Number four, does the superintendent act as a liaison between the community and the school district, respond to concerns of parents, students, citizens, and staff to increase understanding of policies and practices, to keep them informed of and involved with school district activities? The board, again, with a series of questions inside of number four, the board rated him between three and five. Comments, he is straight up and straightforward. He writes good newspaper articles. Communication is a great strength of his. Number five, does the superintendent oversee all financial operations of the school district and prepare, present, and recommend the various budgets to the school board? The board, again, in a series of questions, rated him between four and five. Comments, he is better than he gives himself credit and has put great effort into keeping our budget balanced and the building, and building a need, a needed reserve fund. Number six, does the superintendent interpret employee proposals for the school board and recommend adjustments to employee policies and some restructures? Again, with a series of questions inside of that one, the board rated him between four and five. Number seven, does the superintendent institute and update a, update a comprehensive strategic planning process, including short-term and long-term planning, school district goals and instructional goals? Again, there's a series of questions inside them, and the board rated him between two and five. This is an area he is working on and in progress. This was somewhat hard to rate, because much of the planning process is in motion at this time. Number eight, does the superintendent establish and maintain good relationships with agencies and personnel outside the school district to promote the best interests of the school district through contact with legislators, other superintendents, local government leaders? Again, a series of questions inside of that part, and the board rated him between two and five. Number nine, does the superintendent maintain and improve effective school board superintendent relations by periodically reviewing and upgrading performance through seminars and training sessions? Series of questions inside of number nine, the board rated him between three and five. Does superintendent delegate responsibility and authority to the school district employees as appropriate, define the authority and responsibilities of mid-management staff, and effectively evaluate them? Again, a series of questions inside of that part, the board rated him between three and five. Comments, he needs measurable goals and could possibly delegate some of his workload. That was our closing. Next on agenda, we are going to move to personnel. Number one, review and consider approval of termination of Deb Meadvers, paraprofessional at the end of the two thousand thirteen, or two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year due to financial restrictions and enrollment.
And this is one of the ones on the reductions. All of, all these that are coming through now are really pieces of the reductions that you guys approved. There is no time limit per day, other than just courtesy to the employees to let them know if they're not a licensed staff. If they're a licensed staff, you have very, you have very tight timelines in which you need to do, and if they're under request, please, I'll explain those later on.
Any discussion on the board? I have a motion. No move. Okay, motion by Lou, seconded by Mark. And any further discussion on this one? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say no.
Don't hear, this is not a resolution. Licensed staff, we don't really need resolutions at that point.
And number two, review and consider approval of termination of Amy Ruffey, paraprofessional at the end of the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year due to restrictions and enrollment. Okay, we have a motion by David, and a second by Deb. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Now, we're going to go to number...
We're, we're going to strike number three and remove it, as long as number eight is approved. What's happened is that there was a resignation, and because of the resignation, that then keeps one other pair that would have been terminated. Just saying, and I do want to make this point also, all of these, these terminations have nothing to do with job performance. I just want to make that very clear. They're based on means of the district, number of students that we have. They are not based on performance anyway. That word termination is just an ugly word, but it does not apply as far as any reason. It has nothing to do with job performance. So I'd like number eight approved, and then we...
We'll move to number eight here. Review and consider approval of resignation from Mary Cacke, paraprofessional effective at the end of the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year.
After twenty-nine years of service.
After twenty-nine years.
Yeah, we certainly thank her for all of the great work that she's had with our students and staff, to dislike all the staff that have retired, but we're happy for her.
Okay, I have a motion by Kella, a second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Number four, review and consider resolution proposing placing Diane Fortney on unrequested leave of absence by a .75 rate FTE due to lack of pupils and financial limitations.
Really, this, this is a matter of just reduction in class sizes. It's really a staff piece. The fact that we are moving yearbook also, it did play a part in this, this does remove all of her contract time with the district chief, which was placed on the unrequested leave last year, and then this re- goes from there on. It's really the teacher's contract that determines by certifications and tenure where this falls, and that's really it. Again, not due to job performance anyway, it's just due to the fact that we have less students, and the students themselves, as I mentioned to the board before, do decide what classes are offered despite what they enroll for. This is also the first part of this. What happens now is that they've got fourteen days after they receive the paper to ask for a hearing. Okay, we've already set a hearing date, I think it is set for three thirty on May twenty-first, so we should keep that date clear. The board is not the mediator. We wouldn't need to hire a mediator. Really, it came down to the fact that it's really, if the board approves this, it's hard then to have the board be the mediator. So we'd have to hire a mediator, it certainly probably costs, I guess, probably close to three thousand dollars to do that, plus we would have to hire a court recorder for that meeting if they do. They have fourteen days, not coming tomorrow to ask for a hearing. So I've already set that all up. I have people waiting, just in case that does take place. At the end of the fourteen days, if they do not request a hearing, then we would come back either to the last meeting in May or the, one of the meetings in June. It depends, if there's a hearing in May twenty-first, then assuming that by the time the mediator would put paperwork together, that it would probably be the first meeting in June or the second meeting in June. We have to have everything completed by then, so you have a second resolution, which also has to pass in order to put something down for unrequested leave. And the same procedure would be the case for all these unrequested leave pieces.
Okay. We had a motion from Deb on this one. A second, a second from Mark. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
It's a resolution.
Well, that is a resolution. Okay.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Kella?
Aye.
Okay. Number five, review and consider resolution proposing placing Amy Joguevy on unrequested leave of absence by .172 FTE due to lack of pupils and financial limitations.
And this again is a reduction based on the rural language piece, and Amy has certainly talked about the ESL piece, that's a separate piece, so I'm looking at at least on this one. Their same timeline, so everything applied.
Okay, we have a motion by David, a second by Lou. Any further discussion? Okay, and this is another resolution.
Lou?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Kella?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Okay, number six, review, okay, review and consider resolution proposing Mike Gunther on unrequested leave of absence by .257 FTE due to lack of pupils, financial limitations, and certifications.
This is really the, the one that is the certification piece. We did, I'm a quest leave, Mike, for a piece, and I can get it and put that down from, for last year, I think it was less than a .1. This is a continuation of that, truly, as long as Mike has a couple of classes that he has to take. If those classes are passed, I would expect to come back to the board and reinstate Mike to truly into a full-time position. Again, this reduction, if the certifications don't take place and he doesn't get those, then we are going to keep the unrequested leave in place, because at that point, he's not certified to teach the classes that were requested or that he would be teaching. So again, I expect to come back, I expect to come back to the board and bring this up again for Mr. Gunther, right? And again, it would not only be reinstated to the .257, but it would reinstate to full time. If that were happening, but for now, we need to make this in order to hit our timelines.
Okay, motion by Cheryl, and a second by Kella. Any further discussion? It's another resolution.
Deb?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Kella?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Okay.
And number seven, review and consider resolution proposing placing Michelle Hesse-Crammers on unrequested leave of absence by a 1.0 FTE due to lack of pupils and financial limitations.
And this is our speech resolution.
Motion by Mark?
Aye.
A second by Lou. Any further discussion?
Mark?
Aye.
Kella?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Shay?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Resolution passed. Okay. We are now on informational reports. So, um, we have a DW's staff development report.
Yeah, just a little bit on that. We are looking at our setting our goals for that. So I think that's where part of our job will be now is making sure we're trying to try to be proactive and set the goals going into next year. So we're working on that. We talked. We also located a couple pieces that have gone through staff development. But really, it's the piece separate what I'm talking about. This year, I can't forget my writer moments when I kind of put all the money into one pot. I think we're going to go back to where we did, where we divided up what funds we do at Academy other one. I guess it was less not my part, but I ran just here on my part that we're both a little bit better than. So we're going to go back to something I know worked much better. So there was discussion about those types of things.
Okay. The next couple, one of those facility meetings is probably the same as number four.
Yes, it went there.
So number four was a special board meeting, and that was a facilities meeting. Do you want to address that one first, and then I can...
Yeah, I'd make either way is fine. The special board meeting, really, we had Lou come out and discuss their project with recommissioning of the elementary school. They talked about unit ventilators. They talked about air handlers. They even had some discussion about boilers. They talked about rebates that we can possibly get that will save us some additional dollars if we do specific projects. Certainly, it was the first part of that, once that was done and discussed. And I'll be sending out that particular presentation. They finally got me the piece. I'll be sending it out to people who've asked for it. So that'll be the board members, the facility team, and I have a couple of new members that also asked for it. So I'm going to send the link to that out to them so that we'll have the exact information that they presented. That was kind of no decisions, special board meeting with only the presentation as the topic.
And that included our larger team. We also had a facilities meeting that included our facilities committee. And we are, we struggle with that just like everything else here. We have a lot of needs that we need to accomplish, and we need to cut our budget about in half. And so we're right now trying to figure out what can wait or be canceled and what can move forward. So it's just, can't stretch it far. So that was the facility committee meeting. So then we're going to go to number five.
Any more questions on Lou's?
Okay, then we're going to just go to number five for administrator meeting.
Yeah, just a couple of things, really hoping which was done. And really, I'm, but who knows, like we did get snow in May of last year, but I'm hoping it's over. Now that the storm is over, I'm assuming we'll have one more storm. But I'm hoping not. Just a couple of things on facilities. We're going to, in fact, we talked to a roofing organization today that was recommended by one of the facility committee meeting or members. So I talked to them today, and we're looking at possibly May first at six thirty. So just put it out, and I'll send an email out to all of the board members and the facility team tomorrow. Or we're looking at May sixth, that's the one o'clock meeting, which would mean they come in about three thirty. I'm just making sure if my facility team members can get there that early. So I'm probably leaning more to maybe May first at six thirty to have them come out and kind of give the other side of the roofing piece. We've heard Garland on what they think in their system. Now, I'd like to hear from somebody that just puts in a regular old roof that we've had before because there are certain various opinions on that. So I think we'd like to hear that at least in the facility. One of the questions I have for the board is, do we want to do that at another special board meeting? If we do it on first, so that all board members can be there to hear that presentation? Because that just depends on how I post it then and send it off.
Makes more sense to me.
I would like to be there.
And that is fine with me. I just wanted to clarify. That's what I'm assuming the board would do. So kind of, we're looking at May first. At six thirty, we'll get that posted then. And again, it will be one agenda item, a presentation by a roper who does more traditional roofing system. All right? And we will take that presentation again. So if the board member cannot attend, we'll be able to do that to give that copy of this to the members and stuff. We're also after, after UHL to get the secondary piece done, so I can set up a meeting for that. All we know is that that piece is at Excel, and it's been worked on. Excel hasn't been ready to okay things and get it back to us. As soon as we find that out, we're certainly going to set that up.
What's the whole of it?
Paperwork. That's the only thing I can say is that I'm assuming they're working on the rebate piece for that. We've been, we've been calling Excel, and we've been calling UHL on a regular basis. They're very familiar with, with Donnie's voice at this point. But we have just not been able to set it. We're just behind. Don't have anything. I'll be going to a C meeting on Thursday. Again, that's the Schools for Excellence in Education. I think they're good meetings to attend, talk about financing and all that. So I think that's this Thursday. We'll be heading in for that. Our technology committee was canceled because of weather. We're looking at rescheduling for May first, only at seven in the morning. And with that, we're just working on finishing this year and get things ready for next year.
Okay, do we have any?
Staff is doing a great job, working hard, and the students.
Do we have anything else from anybody? If not, we're going to continue with your agreement.
No.
A motion by Deb, a second by Cheryl, a third by Dave, a aye.
Aye.
Who says no?